Greetings viewers and good evening candidates and community members. The League of Women Voters Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids welcomes you to this forum for candidates running in the 2024 election for Anoka County Commissioner District Five. My name is Leslie Waterhouse, I'm a member of the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area League of Women Voters. I live in Sherburne County and cannot vote for any of the candidates for this office. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates. The League encourages informed and active participation in government. We advocate for important issues and help citizens become informed voters. We welcome all who are interested in learning about a variety of issues to join our organization. Just go to LWVABCMN.org to learn more about the League. This candidate forum is about informing voters. It's held to provide voters an opportunity to hear from candidates on important issues and compare their ideas. The views expressed are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. Thank you to CTN TV for recording the forum and making it available for multiple showings and online. Editing is only authorized for official media reporting excerpts. Edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. Voters' questions have been submitted online in advance. No additional questions will be taken from the audience during this event. The candidates for Anoka County Commissioner District Five are Mike Gamache and Randy Nelson. All candidates running in this race were invited to participate in this forum and all were able to attend. Welcome Randy Nelson and Mike Gamache.
Thank you.
We will begin with the two introductory questions received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, and we'll end with closing statements. Answers are limited to 90 seconds for each of the two introductory questions, and one minute for questions submitted online, and one minute for closing statements. Time limits are strictly enforced. When you see the timer hold up the card indicating that your time is up, please finish your sentence and stop. Starting order was determined prior to the start of this forum. We will rotate with candidates being the first to respond, and each will have the first, the opportunity to start the sections first. We'll begin with opening statements or opening questions, and this will begin with you, candidate Gamache. You'll have 90 seconds. What is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Thank you, Leslie, for the question, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for this event tonight, and also to CTN TV and the City of Coon Rapids for the use of the building. Motivation to run, we have a lot of issues out there, but some big ones that I really want to complete the work on if we possibly can in the next four years would be our new jail in Anoka County, and also the work to raise the money that we need for Highway 65. Those would be the two big issues that I want to, I want to look at and try to complete in the next four years. The experience that I've had, I've been the county commissioner in this district, it changed a little bit, but most of the district is the same since I was first elected, except now I have Oak Grove instead of part of Fridley. I've had this seat since 2014 when I won the first time. Prior to that, I was the mayor of Andover for 14 years. In that time, I have learned a lot about what goes on in county government and also in city government, and the city experience helped me a lot and was one of the reasons why I wanted to run for the county board is because I wanted a better relationship with the county board. I wanted to have the county board and the city councils all across Anoka County working together. That's the way you get things done, and that's what I've started to do all through the 10 years now that I've been on, in office. So I want to continue that, and now we're kind of focusing on the city of Anoka and trying to build those relationships back to where they should be. Thank you.
Candidate Nelson.
With the first introductory question, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Well, first, I'd like to thank Leslie and the League of Women Voters for hosting our second candidate forum. Also, CTN TV for televising this this evening. For those of you out there who have missed the first candidate forum, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Randy Nelson, running for Anoka County Commissioner District Five. I am married to my lovely wife Dar. We have three wonderful children. I am a lifelong resident of both Andover and Coon Rapids. I am a healthcare provider. I am a small business owner, Afghanistan veteran, and I serve on the Andover City Council where I have held the line on city tax increases, and I'm proud and humbled to say that Andover is in the bottom one-third of the 21 cities within Anoka County. And what motivated me to run for a county commissioner is wanting to do the same thing at the county level, which is to hold the line on tax increases. Thank you.
Thank you. For the second introductory question, we will begin with you, candidate Nelson. What are your goals for the future of Anoka County District Five?
Thank you for that question, Leslie. I've got quite a few goals, but what I've, what I've done over the last 20 to 30 years, I've developed some excellent listening skills, and I listen to the taxpayers of Anoka County. When I talk to residents in Andover, Coon Rapids, and Oak Grove, three things are of concern to the residents. Number one, the county taxes. If you probably haven't heard, they just approved the preliminary tax levy increase of 16.86%. Number two, they have a concern with election integrity. You know, we could all agree that without election integrity, we're nothing more than a banana republic. And then number three, public safety. There has been an increase in crime in Anoka County, and if elected as your new county commissioner, I would address all three of these very important issues. And sometimes, the longer that we have, if there's career politicians out there, sometimes they, they lose the ability of listening to their constituents. Thank you.
Candidate Gamache.
Thank you, Leslie. The goal that I have for Anoka County, as I indicated earlier in the first one, was, first of all, is to get the new jail built. That is vital to the safety and the security of our sheriff's office and the deputies that work there, and we're working with the city of Anoka very carefully to get this done and get this done right. Unfortunately, for the number of years prior to, to when I became the board chair this year, we had some issues of not dealing directly with the city council and the mayor of the city of Anoka. And unfortunately, that led to in 2022, when we first gave them the idea or gave them the drawing of the jail, they didn't like it. As a matter of fact, they've been against it ever since, and part of that reason is because we did not build those relationships, and that's the vital thing to do. I've been working on that since 2023 when I was on a committee with Commissioner Matt Look and some city council members. We got through that year, we had a resolution, we couldn't get it quite passed. 2024, I became the board chair, and now we're working with the city of Anoka even closer to make sure we're going to get this done and we're going to get this done right. It is going to be expensive. It's not a cheap building to build, and it is a large building, and so it needs a good site, and it needs to be taken care of that we build the right size as well. So that's my main thing that I hope to achieve, that's one of the main goals that we have, so we got to get it done and we got to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next for this section is the questions that are submitted by the public. So candidate Nelson, you have the opportunity to lead off this section. The first question, what efforts would you support to strengthen public health and safety in Anoka County?
That question was efforts to increase, what, public safety?
What efforts would you support to strengthen public health and safety in Anoka County?
Well, as a healthcare provider, I think it's critical that we work with the Health and Human Services Division at Anoka County. A big division of that is public health. That is, well, Health and Human Services along with public safety are number one and number two as far as the big divisions at Anoka County. We need to be more transparent with Health and Human Services because there are people, well, a very big issue right now, especially for veterans, is suicide prevention. The American Legion has teamed up with Columbia University to put out a video which people can watch on YouTube, but it's got the same principles on suicide prevention that you can use for non-veterans. And then along with public safety, it's critical that we get this, you know, the county commissioners have been discussing the new jail since before 2016. I believe the first estimate was around between 140 and 160 million, and now I think we're sitting at about $210 million to get that jail done, so that's got to be a number one priority for public safety. Thank you.
Candidate Gamache.
So for the public safety aspect of this, yes, the county commissioners work with the sheriff's office and with county attorney's office to make sure that we're covering what they need, what they, what their needs are, either whether it's Sheriff Weiss or County Attorney Johnson. We need to listen to them and make sure we fund what is needed to make public safety a reality in Anoka County. So that's vital, and I've done that every year. Every year I voted for the budget that was presented at the, at the board meetings, and for 14 years I did that as mayor of Andover because we always use the public, we always use the sheriff's office as our police department, and it's worked out well. But you have to understand what the needs are, and that's where the experience of being there and talking with the sheriff and talking with the county attorney to understand exactly what needs to be done. So that's the big part. Now, now, public health is interesting because it is a big part of what we do, but one of the things that is going to come up is going to come up again about the levy. And this is the preliminary levy, as you all know, we can be, we can change it between now and the end of December. But one of the issues there has been how many people we need to hire. Unfortunately, there had been some years where we were not hiring as many as we should have been hiring. It was being artificially pushed away from us as the county board, so we didn't understand and we didn't know what was going on in our own area, and unfortunately, that hurt us. Now we had to make the hires, and that has increased our levy. We have a new county administrator in Jim Dickinson, and that's going to change. We're going to get all the information that we need.
Thank you. This next question will begin with you, candidate Gamache. What is your opinion about the Anoka County Jail?
My opinion about the Anoka County Jail, well, as indicated, we need to get it built. But there are some certain things that we need to do. We need to have a good discussion with the city of Anoka. We need to bring them in, and they have been involved now in the last two years, something that they did not, we're not involved with before. That has led to discussions about how big it should be. Yes, we've been talking about this since 2017, but that was not the county board being involved in it, that was really the sheriff's office being involved in it. He was bringing it along over the years. We did not have, we didn't even not have a plan that was presented to us fully, and we didn't even hire an architect until 2021. So in 2022, we had the plan, as I indicated earlier, the plan was not liked by the city of Anoka, and we went back to the drawing board in 2023. People have brought up the resolutions that we have defeated or got defeated at the county board. We've only had two. One lost in December, and one got passed in July of this year. That's it. So the price in 2016 was not the price that came to us after the architects did their work and after we had actually looked at what the jail was going to be in 2022. So going back to 2016 and saying that's, that's increased by this much is really just a wild fantasy.
Thank you. And candidate Nelson?
Yes, thank you. My opinion about the Anoka County Jail, like I had mentioned earlier, the discussions have been going on since 2016, and I'm 100% for the collaboration between the city of Anoka and Anoka County, and the question to taxpayers is, why wasn't that done seven, eight years ago? And then when we got the initial estimate at 140 to 160 million, now today it's at 210 million. With each delay, there was a, like Commissioner Gamache had mentioned, Commissioner Schulte did have a resolution proposed that he voted against, and then in that delay, that delay has costed taxpayers $50 million. The longer we wait, the more expensive the jail is going to cost. Now, you know, there was discussion on the location and the amount, but every delay that we have is going to cost taxpayers more money. That's what we have to resolve immediately. Thank you.
Next question will begin with you, candidate Nelson. Are there cities or townships in District Five that require specific attention, and if so, what are the issues and what will you bring to the attention of all the county commissioners?
Could you repeat the first half of it?
Yes. Are there cities or townships in District Five that require specific attention, and if so, what are the issues that you will bring to the attention of all the county commissioners?
Yes, well, District Five includes the southern portion of Oak Grove, which is Viking Boulevard South, in Andover from Round Lake Boulevard East to University Avenue, and in Coon Rapids, where the railroad tracks run north and south, right by Sand Creek Park, it goes east to University Avenue. Now, that's District Five, and we have seven districts. There's a lot of things going on, like was, what was mentioned earlier, Highway 65, which right now, things have been approved for Spring Lake Park, Blaine, and Ham Lake, which there are a lot of Andover residents that take that and come in. So there's quite a few things that we can work on. One thing with Oak Grove specifically is the contract that they have with the Anoka County Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Candidate Gamache.
Thank you. There are 21 different cities in Anoka County, and when I say different, I mean they're all a little different. So what you have to do is you have to work with your fellow commissioners, talk about the issues that affect their districts and their cities, and then reach out and visit those cities from time to time to find out exactly what the people are saying. What are they saying at the city council meetings in, in Oak Grove or East Bethel? What are they saying in Fridley and Columbia Heights? And getting to know those people and being involved in what's happening in their cities. We're affecting every city every day with certain projects that are going on all across Anoka County. So that experience that I have in dealing with that and also coming from being a mayor for 14 years and understanding how I was dealing with this, with the county board in those years. I was also the president of the North Metro Mayors Association for five years. I was, I think, the longest president in that regard, but that was also a way that I could get involved more with what the cities in, in Anoka County were hearing and saying and try to work with them on some of those projects.
Thank you. Next question will begin with you, candidate Gamache. What is the role for the county commissioners in managing projected growth during the next 20 years?
Well, the role of the county commissioner is, is not as much as it is the city councils. The city councils are the ones that have plans, comprehensive plans that they, that they send down to the Met Council about their development in their cities. Where development's going to go? Where are you going to see just single-family homes? Where are you going to see the acreage homes going up? So they have more of that role than what a city, what the county board does. What we can do is help them understand where we are looking and where, we can look at where they're looking for roads and expand some of those roads so that they're done as the development is coming along. Controlling that development is not really in, in our purview. What we can do is we can help. We can help to make sure that we have the roads built correctly, that they're big enough, that they're wide enough, and the flow of traffic is good, and they're safe, and the people that are in that, in those cities will be safe on the roads when they're traveling across the county.
Can you repeat that question?
What is the role for the county commissioners in managing projected growth during the next 20 years?
Thank you. The role of the county commissioner over the growth over the next 20 years, like what has been mentioned earlier, there are 21 cities within Anoka County, and each city is working on their city. What we do at the city level does parallel what is done at the county level. For example, Mill and Overlay projects for the city. For the city of Andover, over the last four years, we just did 47 miles of Mill and Overlay projects, which is the most that we have done in a four-year period in its 50-year history. They do the exact same projects at the county level, but at the county level, they've also got the human services, the Anoka County Sheriff's Department, they've got other divisions that help, that, that we don't have at the city level. But looking forward with the growth, we've got to have a strategic plan and follow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, starting with candidate Nelson. What efforts should the county consider to ensure transparency between county officials and the public?
Well, I think that all effort should be made by the county as what we do at the city level to be transparent. Without transparency, you get some pretty frustrated Anoka County residents. That's why it's very important to use different avenues. There are people who are accustomed to email, others, Facebook, other, paper print, like one that comes out from the county is the Anoka County News, which I enjoy getting that. But these are efforts by the county. For example, the city of Andover has the Andover Today newsletter. These are efforts to be more transparent by getting the information out there. If people are unaware of what's going on in the county, they may be very upset. So it's critical that we're transparent. Thank you.
Candidate Gamache.
Thank you. One of the things, and it happened just this year, July 9th meeting that we had at the board, we have a rule that the agenda has to go out 72 hours before the board meeting, and I approve that rule and try to stick by it. And I was very disappointed because we had a role, we had a change at the last minute. Monday, before a Tuesday meeting, we had the resolution to do the jail added to our agenda. I asked why, you know, the staff gave me some explanations, and we ended up doing that, but I have made it since then, and now, again, with our new city administrator, Jim Dickinson, we are going to stick to the 72-hour rule. This is vital. You've got 72 hours to get the agenda out to people, you stick to that rule. I also want to take some credit for the fact that when I first got on the board, there was no public meetings or there were no public statements that could be made during a board meeting. We now have them. We started them about two, two years ago now. We also have public statements that you can bring to a committee meeting, and that has changed as well.
Next question, beginning with candidate Gamache. What is the role of county government in addressing the impacts of rapid growth and development on the quality of life in the county?
Well, that's kind of similar to the other question that we had, but the rapid growth does come from the cities. They are the ones that have the comprehensive plan. Now, we have to deal with the fact that people are moving into our cities and moving into our county, so we have to make sure that those comprehensive plans are well done and they're planning for the future. And then as a county commissioner, what we can do, as I indicated, we can make sure that we've got the right programs for people that are in need of some programming that could, that could happen, whether it's food stamps. Remember, it's the county that actually does all the handling of those programs. They come, the money comes down from the state and some from the feds, but we're the ones that handle it. So that means we have to have the right amount of people in those positions so that we can handle the population of our county. So that's vitally important, and that, again, does have some effect on your, on your levy each year when you have to hire more people to cover the people that are moving into your city as well.
And candidate Nelson?
Yes, that is correct. I agree 100%. The 21 cities within Anoka County, they've got a comprehensive plan, they've got a strategic plan, they've got to follow it, and it's up to each city to try to control how much growth they want. Also, developers, right now, currently, things are slow because of the inflationary economy that we're in and the mortgage interest rates. So for example, the city of Andover was growing quite quickly for quite a few years, but now it has slowed down, and we're just progressing strategically because we're trying to look to the future and not grow too fast and make mistakes. It's the same with the county when it comes to federal, county, state funding. It's, it's part of the county commissioner's job to follow their strategic plan for the strategic growth of Anoka County. Thank you.
Thank you. Beginning with candidate Nelson, what measures, if any, would you support to better protect the environment in the county?
Well, I, I think it's critical to have every avenue to protect, did you ask environment?
Yes.
Yes. Because we had a situation happen in the city of Andover where we had over 53 wells in the Red Oaks neighborhood contaminated with 1-4 dioxane. We had been working with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the Minnesota Department of Health, and the US EPA to resolve this. We also, from the city standpoint, we expedited the feasibility report and got it to our state legislators to elicit the $6.1 million to get the Red Oaks neighborhood on municipal water. We're doing the exact same thing right now for the Eastbrook Terrace neighborhood. So I, I believe that we need to use every single precaution not to allow this to happen in our cities, or else we're going to have to go through the exact same path that the city of Andover did. Thank you.
Candidate Gamache.
Yes, while I was mayor, we dealt with that exact problem, not necessarily in that neighborhood because it hadn't affected that neighborhood yet, but it was the, it was coming from the Superfund dump site, and we were, we did a lot of cleanup in that area, a lot of money was spent from the state and federal government in that area, and unfortunately, from the understanding from the Minnesota Department of Pollution Control, there is a floating piece of pollution that's floating in some of these aquifers, and that's, it runs into certain areas, and people that are still on wells in those areas are the ones that were hampered in this regard. And I helped both with Congressman Niska and Congressman Emmer to try to figure out ways that we could get that money going, and especially from Representative Niska, excuse me, to make sure that he got that into the bonding bill and that the bonding bill got passed so that Andover could get that money and get that taken care of. That was basically to pay for people to go on city water.
Thank you. So it is now time for the closing statements, and you'll each have one minute for your closing statement, and we'll begin closing statements with you, candidate Gamache.
Thank you. I think experience matters, and I believe unique, I am uniquely qualified to be re-elected as your county commissioner in District Five. That's because of the, my experience that I've had both in public service, deep, deep community experience with places like Andover Athletic Association, and business connections over the years that I've made. I, I'm a proud 45-year retired General Mills employee. Great company to work for, and it's just been great to have that in my background. My wife and I, Beth, have lived here since 1985, and we made it our home right away and raised two kids, and now my daughter also lives in Andover as well. My son's a teacher at, at Anoka Elementary School, Lincoln Elementary, so I've got the great ties of this community, and I've loved serving the people of Andover and Coon Rapids, and now of Oak Grove for the last two years after the change in the district. So that's sort of, that's what it's all about, though. It's helping people, getting the job done, and it does help that you have the experience to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Please go ahead, candidate Nelson.
With my extensive background of over 34 years of public service leadership, serving on the Andover City Council, healthcare provider, small business owner, and Afghanistan veteran, I offer the experience, skills, and values needed to represent the residents of Andover, Oak Grove, and Coon Rapids on the city, or the county board. If you want a candidate who is dedicated and proven for lowering taxes, making sure that we have safe and secure elections, and a safe Anoka County with the rise in crime lately, vote for Randy Nelson for Anoka County Commissioner District Five. Also, if you want to find out more information, please go to my website, randynelsonforcountycommissioner. I would really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum and for running for Anoka County Commissioner District Five, and thank you to those who submitted questions. Thank you also to the city of Coon Rapids for the use of the facilities and to CTN TV for your recording. The League posts complete and unedited clips of forums. Links to all the forums are located at LWVABCMN.org, and you can find more information on candidates online at vote411@anoka.com. information on candidates online at Vote 411. If you're interested in the League of Women Voters, visit our website at l w v a b c m n dot org. People of all genders 16 years of age or older are welcome to join. The general election is on November 5th, and early voting began on September 20th. You can register to vote, update your registration, find information on voting options, or find your polling place online at m n votes dot gov or the Minnesota Secretary of State website. You can also register or update your registration at your polling place on election date. Your vote is your voice. Make your voice heard by voting in the general election on or before November 5th. Thank you.